Here in the presentation, look forward to more information about that. The reason why I'm here this evening, and I appreciate your time this evening. Over the past recent couple of weeks, we've had a couple of power outages here at City Hall. And believe me, we do understand the problems that that causes in regards to having power outages here at City Hall in addition to the fire department next door. The reason for the power outages, number one, in regards to a couple of vegetation that has grown into our power lines, we actually did do tree trimming with that. But in addition to that, when that happens, you're actually served from the transformer that's across the street in front of the Sonic. And when you lose power, so do they. So we hear about that. But what we did was, we actually replaced that transformer over there, and we actually rode the feeder and did some tree trimming over there. In addition to that, the fuse that serves this building is a 60 amp. And I know that, I don't know if that means anything, but it's a 60 amp fuse. Well, what we did was, because of the necessity in regards to doing this, when the encore tech came here and did it, he replaced it with another 80 amp. But what we decided to do was go back and we replaced it with a 100 amp fuse that actually serves this building. Our tariff allows us to do that because this is City Hall, because of the necessity in regards to police station as well. Now, I am very pleased in regards to hearing in regards that you're investing into a backup generator. City Hall is supposed to have one. As a utility company, I cannot guarantee you, you're going to have 100% power. One of the power outages you've actually had here, a car was coming down Main Street, ran over the down guide wire that actually tugs on one of our poles. We can't stop a truck from hitting a pole. We can't stop lightning from hitting something. Because of that, I can't guarantee you 100% power in regards to that. Now, I'll always be here, Encore will always be here whenever you have that to respond, to be joined back as soon as possible. But if you're having a meeting here, if you're having some information that's going on here, if you have a guest here, I can't guarantee you can say your power will stay on. So I appreciate in regards to having that. A lot of city halls do have the backup generators, especially with their fire, police and fire. So we are working on that. I don't think you've had any problems in regards to that. I've actually assigned a special tech to actually ride the feeder here. He has rode the feeder. We have four locations that we've done tree trimming here. Like I said, we replaced the fuse here and we replaced the transformer across the street. I don't anticipate in regards to anything happening in regards to power outages, but again, I would really not be truthful with you if I told you it would not happen. Because I can't guarantee that. Now, if it's going to be caused by equipment failure, I doubt that. But I can't stop it from a truck hitting a pole, someone coming down here and pulling the guide wire. So I wanted to be sure we came and expressed that in regards to you. We do understand the necessity of having power and having quality power here. And that's what we strive for, and that's what I'm here for. And so if we have any other questions in regards to that, I'll be sure. I know you have time, so just, you're pressed for time.
Thank you.
If there's anything I can do, please let me know. Don't let me know over the next couple of days. You're in my last meeting before I go to California, so y'all enjoy. Thank you very much.
Bye, Mr. Elvin.
Thank you, my friend.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the presentation on the Library Systems and Services briefing.
We have actually representatives from LSNS here. I mean, they were just right outside the door.
I'm the Tyler Lott.
That's 105 to 10, you have 2 to 3.
Thank you for having us. Todd Prager, the CEO of Library Systems and Services. Appreciate the opportunity just to talk a little bit about what the partnership might look like for the city, the library and us. So we know cities are always struggling. People want more services. There's demands for sure. We don't want to raise taxes or increase the cost of the population. We have built a company and an operation that tries to support that model, to provide exceptional library services for less money for communities, but most importantly, making sure that the library services are kept localized under local control and governance. So the good news is, we're very much in alignment. I've read your mission, your vision for the city, for the library. LSNS shares all of your visions in regards to providing credible free access services for your community, enriching literacy, education, outreach. All of those things are incredibly important. For us to do that effectively, most importantly for us, it comes down to the staff, the local staff here in the local library. It's very important for us in this situation to try to bring that staff across to LSNS to provide these services. And in doing so, making sure that the staff remains happy, engaged and remains whole in regards to their compensation. Our model is predicated on their happiness and success. And we do that by, like I said, bringing them across whole so they feel like they're not disadvantaged, but also part of a larger library community where they can look for their development and foster their development down the road. So what we're talking about basically is, we know that you're spending about $1 million on your library each year. It's an incredible investment. We think we can do this for 10 years, give you a predictable cost basis for the next 10 years, that would save the city $1.2 million, of which those dollars could be repurposed, whether it's for cultural things, it's your decision how you'd want to use that money. But in our model, we're able to do that without sacrificing any of the existing services. Everything you love in regards to the programs, the hours, the outreach, all will continue in place. And with our national model, we think we can continue to enhance those services and bring in additional resources to really expand the footprint of the library. As we all know, most libraries primarily have a relatively small portion of the population that loves the library, routinely use the library. We love that group. We also want to do all we can to do continued outreach to the rest of the community to really broaden the appeal of the library for the greater community. Part of that also is really, we have a team of people that helps with grants and searching for additional resources for the library. So how our model works is, the company's been around for 47 years. It's a library company. It's all we do, public libraries, federal libraries. But one thing we learned early on is that all libraries are basically, from an administrative perspective, basically the same across the country. Certainly, the programming, the outreach is different in every community. It's very localized, but the administrative part of it is very singular around the country. So we decided early on, if we could do the administrative services of an individual library on a consortium basis, on a national basis, we could bring efficiencies and bring cost savings to those member libraries, but most importantly, not asking its members to give up local control. Because at the heart of it, that's what's really critical, to keep control of your library. But also, an example of that would be, we purchased $8 million in materials for libraries around the country. We have the best discounting to bring shelf-ready materials into your library. So if you're spending $100,000, I promise you, I can bring you materials more cost-effectively than you get them on your own. It's a partnership. I always refer to my customers as partners. They refer to me as the same. It only works when the partnership works. And to be clear, when we think of the partnership, obviously, it's the city council who we take direct governance from, as well as working with the library advisory board. But critical to our circle of success is volunteers and friends. We know that they're critical to the library, to the community. They're passionate about the library. We want to continue to work with them, continue to appreciate them and continue to value their services going forward. And also, the other part of that component, which is really important, is the community outreach. We know there's already good outreach within your community from your library, but we're going to continue to support that, whether it's the school districts, whether it's higher education, whether it's the business community, the homeschooling network. We continue to grow and build those relationships to have us all work together for success. So what I think an important aspect to understand is that, as long as people use the word privatization, it's not that. The library, the assets, the materials, all remain physical property of the city of Duncanville. What we bring is expertise and staffing to the equation, but it's still your physical asset. And again, part of that is to make sure that everything is still done very locally in mind. So any collection decisions within the library are still maintained and controlled by the library itself. And again, it's a free public asset for the community that never changes. Ben Williamson, who's the city manager of Farmers Branch, just gave us a nice quote. I'll talk about them in a second. Farmers Branch has been with us since 2011. They had two five-year contracts, just renewed for another 10 years because they're so happy with the relationship. We saved them significant dollars over the initial part of our contract while improving the facility. We just did a complete refurbishment of their library. And one of the skills we bring with us, which is part of your contract, is we bring in space planners and designers that come into the facility to help kind of reimagine or rethink what the library could be or should be, or at least validate what you're currently using it for. We bring in consultants to help with strategic planning, with community assessments, all of that is part of the contract. But we've had an incredible partnership with Farmers Branch. In addition to that, Red Oak, Texas, which is one of our older contracts, goes back to 2003. Again, growing community, lots of needs and desires for them. We were helped now for 21 years. Basically, they started in a library that was probably the size of this room, if you've ever been there. And we've now just moved them into a larger library, which we're really proud of. We're excited about the Google app we just got with them for $100,000 for new maker space within the library. Again, very successful relationship. Wilmer, Texas, we just started with them in 2022. Again, a community growing, they have lots of aspirations. We've done a lot to help them with their existing library, and now they're building a new library, which we're part of that process to help move them into that new library. There's a quote there from Rona, who's, again, a big proponent, if anybody. What I'll tell people is I can stand up all day and tell you how much I love us and how great we are, but I always ask you to check our references, because they'll tell you exactly how they feel about our partnership and relationship. Huntsville, Texas, probably our most recent acquisition. As far as 2023, they started in January. Again, incredibly successful partnership with the city. We've done a lot to improve the library. One of their desires was to really change the space around. They wanted more experience space, more meeting space. They had a lot of materials that hadn't been checked out in like a decade, a lot of shelving. And we went in with our space planners with the city and said, hey, we can remove some of the books that have been here for a decade that no one's touched. And now we have a tween scene, which they love. And they are now bringing more people into the library because we've opened up the library and kind of changed the way it's being used within the community. Again, a quote from the mayor of Huntsville, I'm really proud of this relationship as well. LibraryQ Analytics, real quick, it's a platform we designed. We use it in all of our libraries. It would come with the contract. It's used in 2,000 libraries now. It's analytics. It tells you basically what's going on in your library. It gives you validation of your investment. It tells you where you should go, different directions, different things to do. It tells you what's going on in the community to bring more people into your library. It's a great platform. You'll get all the data that comes with this on top of your ILS. We'll provide that. Libraries are evolving. They're going to continue to evolve. We wake up every day thinking about libraries. You guys wake up every day thinking about 100 different things. We wake up every day just thinking about your library and your staff. And we protect them, we take care of them, we work with them, we nurture them, and we bring you incredible ideas and thoughts about what you should be thinking about for the future of your own library, while still making sure it's your library. We've been doing this for 47 years. Great retention rate. We survey our customers, our employees, we ask their opinion, we want to make sure they're all happy. We are a company of librarians, 850 strong.
Your last slide, you said 95% is on the last slide?
Yes.
Employees, library staff?
Yes.
Can you tell me that a little, what you mean by that?
Yeah, so of the 850 people, 95% of those are located in physical libraries. They are producing the library, and the other 5% are the support staff.
Okay, that was the last slide?
This is the last slide. But this is kind of a summation of everything I've already talked about, so you can feel free to, local control, local staff, it's all good. We're gonna...
Okay, so I would suggest that if the council has any other questions or comments, direct them to the city manager's office, and then he can relay them to these gentlemen, because we are way behind schedule.
Sorry.
No, that's not your problem.
So then I think what you might do is recess, get to executive session.
All right. Then we're going to do just that. We're going to do the recess.
What are we doing with paper?
We'll do it during the council meeting.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Combs.
So before recess, because I know some people showed up because they wanted to hear some answers to some questions about this. And so, you know, you might want to apologize to those people, but also, my understanding from the libraries we went to is that those libraries had some clear vision of where they want to go with the library. Y'all helped them get to where they want to go, right?
Yes.
We've never had a discussion about what our vision is for our library, where we want to go. I'd just like to request that the council with the library board, take a tour of our library and have that kind of a discussion before, because my understanding is this is going to just show up as an action item. And I think prior to that, we need to have some discussion about what we want in our library in its current status.
Very, very good observations and comments, and I appreciate that. And I do apologize to those that may have come here just specifically for this issue, but sometimes our agendas just get too crowded to accommodate our normal business. So once again, I apologize for that, for any inconveniences caused, but we'll surely be able to answer questions from any citizen that didn't feel like they got to ask questions or hear answers to questions today. If you just get in touch with the city manager's office, we'll take care of getting information to you and answering your questions. I apologize. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate it. Okay, so with that, we're going to recess into, well, we're going to recess the current session at 6:59. And...
And then y'all are going into council chambers after executive session?
Okay, welcome everyone, and thank you for coming tonight. We're going to begin our regular session on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, beginning at 7:23 PM. And let me start off by once again apologizing for those folks that came specifically to the briefing session for the item on the third-party library service. Sometimes we just get log jammed in our items. We try to expeditiously move through our agendas, but when we get log jammed to an extent where we've got to move on, it happens from time to time. We try to do the best we can to avoid that, but I want to offer my apologies to those that were inconvenienced and not getting to sit through that session tonight and ask questions. With that, we're going to move on to our invocation. Mr. Koontz, would you please stand, please?
You would bow with me, please? Father in heaven, we approach you at this time once again with great humility in our hearts, acknowledging you, Father, as the great God and Creator of heaven and earth. We thank you, Father, for this glorious creation in which we find ourselves. We thank you, Father, for our part in it. We thank you, Father, for life that you have given us. We're thankful, Father, for the many blessings that we enjoy in this life. We thank you for our homes. We thank you for our families. We thank you, Father, for our talents and our abilities and the work that we have to provide for ourselves and our families. And we thank you, Father, at this time for this great city. And we thank you, Father, for the good people who live here. And we thank you, Father, for those who work, the city staff, our police and fire departments. And we thank you for all those who work hard to make this city great. And we pray, Father, that you be with us this evening as we deliberate and as we consider and as we review opportunities to contribute to the greatness of this city. We ask, Father, that you grant us wisdom. We ask that you grant us patience. We pray, Father, that you give us joy in the things that we're doing. And we pray, Father, that these things are good for those who live here now and also for those future generations. We thank you, Father, once again for this privilege and this blessing. We pray again for our first responders, and we ask that you bless them, that you keep them safe, keep their families safe. And we pray, Father, not only for the local government here, but state governments and national governments, that you grant wisdom and patience and compassion there as well. Father, we acknowledge our sins and our transgressions, and we acknowledge that from time to time we fall short of your standard, but we ask that you forgive us of those transgressions as we repent and we turn from them. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledges. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under... Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move into our reports. I'm going to go with council member reports first. Councilman Mac Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just really talk about a few community events that happened that were nice, successful events. The Dunkinville Lions Club had their pancake breakfast, had a wonderful turnout and good food and fun. Also, there was a concert last night that was an excellent concert, very well attended, at First Christian Church. Master's Voice did a Christmas program. Excellent job by them. And also competing last night was the Comp Plan Group, so that happened. But I also want to take time to also congratulate our Dunkinville Panthers because they have moved forward in the playoffs, and it looks like they're going to keep going that way, and maybe North Shore is going to come meet us again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McGudn?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City of Champions. I have only a couple of announcements. Yes, as Councilmember Mac Burnett stated, the Comp Plan was... We had a workshop last night where we asked the citizens to come out and participate. And if you are out in the lobby, you will see that the stands are still up, and you are able to get sticky notes, read the board, the different boards, and if you have any input that you would like to add while you're here before leaving, I would ask that you do so. The Comprehensive Plan 2040 is the steering committee, which are members of the community, three council members, and we have MRB that we're working with in designing and creating our comprehensive plan moving forward for the next 15 years and what we would like to see here in our city. So I would invite you to participate if possible. Give us your feedback, what you would like to see here in your city as it relates to each item on those boards. Also, December 6th, this coming Friday night, holiday lights in the park. We have a great lineup of entertainment, and it's promising to be very fun for your families, so please come out, enjoy the parade, and enjoy the activities that we have there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pennebaker?
Good evening. I want to just piggyback on the Comp Plan. There is a survey that's available. It's extensive. It takes time, but it's really vital that we get citizens' response and input on it. I've been working on mine for about a week, and I keep opening my phone and going through it, but it's really important that we get everyone's feedback on that, so I'd appreciate it if you'd look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Pennebaker. I did also get to go to the Comp Plan meeting over at the Field House, and I have to tell you, I want to commend all the committee members and all the other people that are involved in putting this thing together. I could tell by looking at it, they put in a lot of work, all of them, and they're all to be commended. It takes us in a direction that we've needed to go in for a long time, and when this thing's done, I think it will be beneficial to people way into the future. The amount of thought that's been put into this is tremendous, and thanks, MRB, for assisting in this effort. And then secondly, to a point that Councilmember Mac Burnett said, when I left the Comp meeting, I went over to the Master Voice Quartet, went over to the Master Voice Quartet Gospel Singers at First Christian Church. So I don't want to say that in comparison, the Comp Plan was the doldrums, but when I got over there, the energy was heavy. It was a good time, well-attended. Thank you, First Christian Church, and Mr. Mac Burnett. It was a very moving event to hear the music of that quality. It's amazing. If you ever get a chance to hear these gentlemen, I would encourage that. So thank you. And then lastly, we have someone in the audience. Where is she? Right there, Ms. Kelly McChesney. Kelly, would you come up to the podium very quickly, please? Kelly is our outgoing street superintendent. It has been for... Help me out. How many years? Nine? Nine, 10 years. Done a tremendous job for us. I remember I was working when they brought her onboard, and I looked up and I saw this tiny woman, and I thought that... I was used to burly, sweaty, the street superintendents, and here comes Kelly. What an amazing job she's done for this city for those nine or 10 years. It's bittersweet, but Kelly's got plans, and we've talked, and I just can't tell you how much she's meant to the city and what an honor it was to work with her and to be mayor during her last days here and working with the city. And I want to congratulate her, and I hope you all appreciate that a lot of the work that's gone on in this city having to do with our streets was under her guidance. And thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to be sad to leave, happy to move on to the next part of my life. I'm going to be a little lost, I think, for a while, but I appreciate...
Twenty-four, beginning at seven twenty-three P. M. And let me start off by once again apologizing for those folks that came specifically to the briefing session for the item on the third-party library service. Sometimes we just get log jammed in our items. We try to expeditiously move through our agendas, but when we get log jammed to an extent where we've got to move on, it happens from time to time. We try to do the best we can to avoid that, but I want to offer my apologies to those that were inconvenienced and not getting to sit through that session tonight and ask questions. With that, we're going to move on to our invocation. Mr. Koontz, would you please stand, please?
You would bow with me, please. Father in heaven, we approach you at this time once again with great humility in our hearts, acknowledging you, Father, as the great God and Creator of heaven and earth. We thank you, Father, for this glorious creation in which we find ourselves. We thank you, Father, for our part in it, and we thank you, Father, for life that you've given us. We're thankful, Father, for the many blessings that we enjoy in this life. We thank you for our homes. We thank you for our families. We thank you, Father, for our talents and our abilities and the work that we have to provide for ourselves and our families. And we thank you, Father, at this time, for this great city. We thank you, Father, for the good people who live here, and we thank you, Father, for those who work, the city staff, our police and fire departments, and we thank you for all those who work hard to make this city great. We pray, Father, that you be with us this evening as we deliberate and as we consider and as we review opportunities to contribute to the greatness of this city. We ask, Father, that you grant us wisdom. We ask that you grant us patience. We pray, Father, that you give us joy in the things that we're doing, and we pray, Father, that these things are good for those who live here now and also for those future generations. We thank you, Father, once again, for this privilege and this blessing. We pray again for our first responders, and we ask that you bless them, that you keep them safe, keep their families safe. And we pray, Father, not only for the local government here, but state governments and national governments, that you grant wisdom and patience and compassion there as well. Father, we acknowledge our sins and our transgressions, and we acknowledge that from time to time we fall short of your standard, but we ask that you forgive us of those transgressions as we repent and we turn from them. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under. With that, we'll move into our reports. I'm going to go with council member reports first. Councilman Mac Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just really talk about a few community events that happened that were nice, successful events. The Dunkinville Lions Club had their pancake breakfast, had a wonderful turnout and good food and fun. Also, there was a concert last night that was an excellent concert, very well attended at First Christian Church. Master's Voice did a Christmas program, excellent job by them. And also, competing last night was the Comp Plan group, so that happened. But I also want to take time to also congratulate our Dunkinville Panthers because they have moved forward into playoffs, and it looks like they're going to keep going that way, and maybe North Shore is going to come meet us again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McGudden.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City of Champions. I have only a couple of announcements. Yes, as Councilmember Mac Burnett stated, the Comp Plan was, we had a workshop last night where we asked the citizens to come out and participate, and if you are out in the lobby, you will see that the stands are still up, and you're able to get sticky notes, read the board, the different boards, and if you have any input that you would like to add while you're here before leaving, I would ask that you do so. The Comprehensive Plan 2040 is the steering committee, which are members of the community, three council members, and we have M. R. B. that we're working with in designing and creating our comprehensive plan moving forward for the next fifteen years and what we would like to see here in our city. So I would invite you to participate if possible. Give us your feedback, what you would like to see here in your city as it relates to each item on those boards. Also, December sixth, this coming Friday night, holiday lights in the park. We have a great lineup of entertainment, and it's promising to be very fun for your families, so please come out, enjoy the parade, and enjoy the activities that we have there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pennebaker.
Good evening. I want to just piggyback on the Comp Plan. There is a survey that's available. It's extensive. It takes time, but it's really vital that we get citizens' response and input on it. I've been working on mine for about a week, and I keep opening my phone and going through it, but it's really important that we get everyone's feedback on that, so I'd appreciate it if you'd look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Pennebaker. I did also get to go to the Comp Plan meeting over at the Field House, and I have to tell you, I want to commend all the committee members and all the other people that are involved in putting this thing together. I could tell by looking at it, they've put in a lot of work, all of them, and they're all to be commended. It takes us in a direction that we've needed to go in for a long time, and when this thing's done, I think it will be beneficial to people way into the future. The amount of thought that's been put into this is tremendous, and thanks, M. R. B., for assisting in this effort. And then, secondly, to a point that Councilmember Mac Burnett said, when I left the Comp meeting, I went over to the Master Voice Quartet, went over to the Master Voice Quartet Gospel Singers at First Christian Church. So I don't want to say that in comparison, the Comp Plan was the doldrums, but when I got over there, the energy was, it was heavy. It was a good time, well-attended. Thank you, First Christian Church, Mr. Mac Burnett. It was a very moving event to hear that music of that quality. It's amazing. If you ever get a chance to hear these gentlemen, I would encourage that. So thank you. And then, lastly, we have someone in the audience. Where is she? Right there, Ms. Kelly McChesney. Kelly, would you come up to the podium very quickly, please? Kelly is our outgoing street superintendent, has been for, help me out, how many years? Nine? Nine, ten years, done a tremendous job for us. I remember I was working when they brought her onboard, and I looked up and I saw this tiny woman, and I thought that, I was used to burly, sweaty, the street superintendents, and here comes Kelly. What an amazing job she's done for this city for those nine or ten years. It's a bittersweet, but Kelly's got plans, and we've talked, and I just can't tell you how much she's meant to the city and what an honor it was to work with her and to be a mayor during her last days here and working with the city, and I want to congratulate her, and I hope you all appreciate that a lot of the work that's gone on in this city having to do with our streets was under her guidance. And thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you. I'm going to be sad to leave, happy to move on to the next part of my life. I'm going to be a little lost, I think, for a while, but I appreciate all of you so much. And most of all, I want to say that most of the good things that have happened in our department are due to the wonderful crew we have. I've got the best crew I could ever ask for, and so, but, so thank you. It's going to be sad to leave.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Onto the city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, Council, good evening. If I could please request a time extension, I think with something we want to do real quick is going to take a little bit longer than the two minutes.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Mac Burnett, second by Ms. Gooden. Please vote. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pennebaker. Appreciate it. Just real quick, Councilmember Gooden mentioned Friday's holiday lights. We're really excited about that. I just want to share the times with the public. The parade kicks off at six fifteen on West on Wheatland to Main Street, going north on Main Street and then turning on Center Street. We're going to have a lot of vendors. Staff has been working really hard across a lot of departments, and so very proud of them and all the work that they're putting in for this. At seven fifteen, the tree lights. And Mayor, I have been assured and promised that when you flip that switch, those lights are going to come on this year. So we're going to, we're going to make sure that that happens, and there's been testing multiple nights this week to make sure that that happens after last year. Didn't quite work out. We have two concerts, one at seven thirty, Jade Flores, and eight thirty, Kid 'n Play, and at eight fifteen, the Drone Show. So it's going to be a packed night, a lot of fun and excitement. That's this coming Friday night, December sixth. Also, normally, this is the first meeting of the month. We would have your financial report. We'll move that to next meeting because of the Thanksgiving holiday. It got us a little tight in the month for November, so you'll get that report. And finally, I want to ask the police chief to come up, Chief Stogner, to make a very special introduction to us.
Good evening. I am not leaving. Thank you for that. That's some good reassurance. And thank you, Mr. Finch, for allowing me this time to introduce Officer Hankins, who's been with the police department for four years, but also our newest officer, Officer Jack, whose badge number will be number four whenever he comes in. He's a little hyper right now. He's an eighteen-month-old Belgian Malinois. He is our new canine. He is very treat-driven. But he's going to be working the streets soon. We certainly wanted to introduce him to everybody. He'll be part of the parade Friday, but this is Officer Jack. We'll have a swearing-in ceremony within the next week or so, and we'll certainly stream that on social media as well and invite everybody.
Chief, could you also, just so the public's aware, talk about the bulletproof vest and the calendar?
Yes. Officer Hankins has done a tremendous amount of work on getting this canine department, canine division back up and operational. He should get all this credit. So he did a tremendous amount of research on body armor for canines, and he came across, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the child's name. He came up with it.
Brady's Canine.
Brady's Canine. So this child learned that a lot of canines in America don't have body armor. So what they do is they highlight dogs who are in need of this body armor, and our dog's going to be Mr. December?
Yeah.
So he will be in December. So please, go to that website, purchase a calendar. You'll see him in our police department for sure and help provide these canines with body armor. Yeah, of course.
If he gets one.
Yeah, that's true.
He's on duty.
He is on duty. So he will be working Bravo nights. Once we start filling some of our vacancies, we're going to pull him off of a shift, and he will work kind of a fluid shift based on some of the metrics that we're getting from the data that we're pulling from our system. So he, and he knows the expectations. He is laying the foundation for this unit to grow. I have always, and I will always, try to be the experts in this metroplex where people come to us for training, and I think with his attitude, his experience, and his passion for this, that'll happen sooner than later.
Chief, could you maybe, it was just asked, could you maybe just talk about maybe what a typical shift might include, some of the things that Officer Jack will be working on?
Of course. In fact, I'll give it to Officer Hankins, if you don't mind. He's the expert.
See if he can do it with the dog. Sit, sit. Blah, blah. Yes, sir. So a typical shift for us, what I hope to see is is just traffic stops when we suspect narcotics or anything like that. When we suspect any kind of narcotics or anything like that, we'll run the dog around. He's currently certified to detect cocaine, heroin, methamphetamine, and MDMA. So once he detects those odors, he'll come into a sit, just kind of like how he is right now, and then that gives us probable cause of search of vehicle. Additionally, we do tracking as well for suspects, so some of your more serious crimes, mostly felonies, we can deploy them as well or try to locate them, which will be a big asset to us, I believe, as well. We're going to start implementing training to all the shifts, just so everyone gets used to being around the dog, knows what we can and can't do, and just let them know that we're here to help out.
We'll eventually, and a lot of it has to do with me being off for the past couple of weeks, we're going to have an extensive amount of public education on this as well. I think this is a force multiplier. We have suspects running from us quite often. It's certainly more advantageous for us to send a dog into a location. Obviously, this is probably not a dog that you would want personally that lounges around the house, as you can see. He is ready to go to work, and I'm ready to put him on the street. Now, I think they're going to do a great job for us. Any questions?
How long's it been since we've had a canine unit?
That's a great question. If I had to guess, I would say nine or ten years. It's been a significant amount of time.
And will also, the dog will be available for surrounding cities?
That's correct. Yes. So they, they'll train. He's had the network of canine officers that he'll work with. Obviously, when we start building our facility, we'll look at maybe housing some of the canine stuff where we can host some training here as well.
Outstanding. Mr. Koontz.
How many hours, like, per shift will he be on? How many shifts a week will he be working? Obviously, he's not going to be working twenty-four-seven.
Well, no, he will be on call, though. So unfortunately, being the only canine, he will be on call twenty-four-seven. He will work a normal patrol shift for now, which is twelve hours. It's eight-hour work week, I'm sorry, not work week, bi-monthly. So it's his normal schedule that he has now. And then, once we pull him out, we'll figure out the best schedule, whether it's a ten-hour shift, that way he's here more often than not.
And when he's not actively working, where will he be?
He'll be either training.
Doghouse at the police station?
No, no, no. He houses him at his house.
Okay.
Yes, so all of that stuff's provided to him.
Thank you.
Yes, sir? Any other question? I have one more thing that I certainly don't want to miss. So today marks the forty-fifth anniversary of our two officers who have passed away. That was, I'm sorry, I'm sure Alex is, sorry, buddy. That's Sergeant Michael Poe, who is a three-year veteran, and Officer Roger Hobden, who had been on the job for two weeks when they were tragically killed in the line of duty. So this marks the forty-fifth year, so I want to make sure and highlight that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so we'll move on to item two, proclamations and presentations. The first is Tyler Agee, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, Fall 2024 Business
Evening, everyone. Oh, that's much better. Yes, I believe I do have one board member, Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board member in the crowd today, so if she would like to come up and join me as I present these awards, So our first award is the Fall 2024 Business Beautification Award. We will be giving that to Gawena Coffee Shop, located at seven oh three South Main Street. And I have a brief presentation for them. They were not able to make it to the meeting, but I will hand-deliver this to them tomorrow to make sure that they receive it. Whereas, the City of Dunkinville is committed to improving the physical quality of community life, and the Keep Dunkinville Beautiful Board was established to promote this commitment. And the mission of the Keep Dunkinville Beautiful Board is to empower Dunkinville citizens and businesses to take responsibility for enhancing their community environment, and each quarter, the Keep Dunkinville Beautiful Board recognizes one commercial property within the city for significant improvements to the exterior portion of the property, landscape improvements and/or long-term maintenance of the property that exemplifies high-quality standards. And Gawena Coffee Station, located at seven eleven Main Street, has been selected as the Business Beautification Award recipient for the winter 2024 quarter. Now, therefore, Greg Contreras, Mayor of the City of Dunkinville, do hereby urge our residents to join in congratulating Gawena Coffee Station, located at seven eleven South Main Street, and commending this business for contributing to the beautification of So the next presentation is also from the Keep Dunkinville Beautiful Board. We will be presenting the Fall 2024 Curb Appeal Winners. Up first, from District One, we have Armando Garcia, located at one oh three North Greenstone Lane. From District Two, we have E. J. Sharp, four oh two Swan Ridge Drive. District Three, we have Troy Marcellano, seven four two South Forest Circle. From District Four, we have John E. Lambert, five oh two Dean Court. District Five, we have Vicky Maulman, five fifteen Frank Kiesler Boulevard. If any of these recipients are here with us today, I'd love to have them come up and join us for a brief photo. If not, we will make sure they get their gift baskets delivered to them by our board members. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item, item three, citizens' input. We did receive a number of email citizen input, that each council member has that packet of emails to read through. They won't be read publicly, and posted our guidelines up here for citizens' input portion of our meeting. With that, at this time, two-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic to address the council. Please announce your name and address.
Karen Trapp, twelve fourteen Morning Dove Drive, Dunkinville, Texas. I want to talk about the library. The library is the heart of the city. I've lived here twenty-seven years, Morning Dove Drive. We came here when my husband started working for Avis. I work as a school teacher at a small, little school in Cedar Hill. I raised five children in Dunkinville. They considered the library their second home. I found out about this two days ago, a little upset. I talked to my neighbors, who some of them are friends of the library, some of them are library volunteers, and they had no idea that this was happening. I feel like this has not been transparent. Someone in the audience told me that they were going to vote on December seventeenth. I'm not sure if that's true. I hope it's not. Someone suggested, oh, that I look up on Glass Door and see what some of the employees of the library services had to say. Some of them were notorious for low-balling pay, the corporation expects the world for pennies, low pay, no budget for needed services, constantly understaffed and underpaid, outsourced means out of touch. I don't want the heart of my city to be outsourced. I love the library. I go to the library. I feel welcome at the library. I don't know why this is happening, if it's money. Let's talk about it. Have you talked to the staff? My two minutes is up. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Richard Tittlebaum.
I'd like to start with the library during the...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, sir. Name an address for the...
Oh, I totally forgot. Richard Tittlebaum, one six two six Shannon Drive, Dunkinville. During the library briefing, the CEO told us that ninety-five percent of customer retention when they take over. My question is, what is the percentage of staff retention when they take over? The staff is helpful, especially for the elderly. Large for my ninety-year-old mother, for someone like me who's terrible at computers and all that stuff, they're helpful, and they're always helping. One girl goes out, another one takes her place. They're awesome. I appreciate all they do. Number two, can we please finish the Daniel Dale Bike Lane? It was, been in the contract already, they could pass in eighteen. It got delayed because of COVID. COVID's over. Can we get that bike thing done? And the last thing is, thank everyone at the rec center. I practically live there. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janice Davis.
Janice Davis, seven oh two Cheryl Boulevard, Dunkinville. I came tonight because I was interested in the ideas for the library, and I really appreciate you suggesting that the library staff, that they find a direction for where they want the library to go and spend a little more time before a vote is taken and a decision is made. I did go to the library the other day and talked with one of the staff ladies there, the children's director, I think she was. She was very concerned that she was going to be losing her job, and yet, in the presentation, it sounds like perhaps they will be rehired by this company that would take over. So I think some clarification needs to be given about what's going to happen with the current staff. I think also, I was concerned about, is our decisions still going to be made on a local basis? Because the company is headquartered in California and in Maryland, and I want to make sure that our Texas values are, continue to be present in the library, and decisions are made with, you know, Texas values in mind. I think, well, there were several questions here. I was concerned about the free pantry as well, and I asked some of the staff there, and they said, yes, that is part of the library. So would that continue to be available there in the lobby of the library, or would that maybe be moved someplace else, whatever? I also realize that... I also realize that the current library does not represent itself very well online. And when you try and read a book online, it's usually not available. And so, there are some ways that the library could certainly be improved, and I think its online presence would be a big boon to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Denise Hovland. Denise. Of Lord, of land? No, Denise? I'm having a little bit of trouble reading that last name, but... On Casa Grande? Not here? Okay. Teddy Williams? Keep that card out in case she just went to the restroom or something, so... Go on to Tanya Benson.
My name is Tanji Benson. My address is 813 Link Drive, Duncanville. I would like to thank each and every one of you all, the council panel, for the equipment, new cardio equipment that we're going to be getting in the fitness room. Thank you especially Mr. Koontz for the heads up, for letting me know last night, and Mr. Pennebaker, who is my councilman, for the information that you all have given us. I want to say, on behalf of the senior citizen recreation gang, we have a little gang there, they asked me to let you all know to thank you so much for that. But I would ask that you all consider focusing on updating the strengthening equipment, the mechanical weights, the bell bars. As I was looking at the, where the bell bars go, the racks, I noticed how it's rusty. And as a nurse of 42 years, I'm concerned about the safety of it, because if you have elderly people that have thin skin, or even young people that have soft skin, dealing with those bell bars, if they rub up against it, those rusty areas, they can, their skin can tear, which can cause an infection. So I would ask that you all please consider working on that next project. And I would like to thank Bart for his hard work. Sometimes I get on his nerve, but he tolerates me. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mark Graham.
Mark Graham, 410 Santa Fe Trail. I want to speak on the arts in Duncanville. I appreciate that you all have stepped up, and a cultural district is in the works. But I've been involved in another project here in Dallas, I mean, in Duncanville, that has taken far too long. If you want to get the public involved in this, some things have got to start happening that they visually can see. It doesn't have to be huge. I just talked to Ron a few minutes ago and mentioned a few things, but if it just, if this goes four years and people look at it and go, what's happened? I know from personal experience, people lose interest. There's an old saying, and it's actually from a country music artist. It's three chords and the truth. That's the other part of this. Art is somebody's truth. We don't need to be deciding what their truth is. That is theirs. We used to have a poetry night here that was well-attended because people felt like they could get up there, they could speak their mind, no one was going to shut them down, and no one was going to get in their way. I'm asking you all to embrace that. Three chords and the truth. If it's the truth, whether you like it or not, you have to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, holding Ms. Williams' card here, but she has not returned, so we're going to conclude our citizens' input session for this evening and move on to our consent agenda. Okay, I've been asked to relate to the city manager, a request to talk a little bit about where we're headed with our Pyburn Park issue.
So Mayor, this was actually briefing Item 3D on tonight's agenda that we did not make it to. So later in the agenda, after individual consideration, we're going to ask Police Chief Stogner to come up, understand board reports, and then he's going to address this matter at that time.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. We did discuss this in briefing session. I think all questions have been addressed. No further questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion to approve is Councilman McNabb, second. Councilman Koontz, please vote. All right, thank you. Okay, we now move on to items for individual consideration. Take any necessary action as a result of executive session. We're still going to return into executive session, so there's no action to be taken at this point in time. However, we will, when we come back out into open session, report on any action that is to be taken. Item B, consider a resolution casting the City of Duncanville's 15 votes for a member of the Board of Directors of the Dallas Central Appraisal District. Mr. Keys.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we did do a briefing on this last meeting, mentioned that we had the ballot, sent the ballot out to you, asked to receive nominations. I put those nominations in the staff report, but we do need to make sure that we get a resolution and actually fill out the ballot to cast your 15 votes for at least one candidate prior to December 15th. So that's why this resolution is before you this evening. And I did leave it blank, so when you make the resolution, you can add the name, but the resolution is written so that we can mark the ballot after the meeting and send it to DCAT.
Okay, thank you. With that, we did, well, I will just move to Ms. Cherry Brown, who is going to start off the conversation about this vote.
So Mayor, I feel as though we had some great nominees, but I would like to make a motion that we split our 15 votes, eight going to Cassandra Phillips and seven going to Clyde Hairston.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Karen Cherry Brown, and seconded by Councilman Pennebaker. Please vote. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Keys. All right, Item 5C, consider a resolution approving a contract with Hundin Partners. Mr. Keys.
Almost sat down. I forgot I was this one, too. So Hundin Partners did come and do a briefing at the last council meeting. They offer a variety of services, which were included in the proposal that I attached to the staff report. So if you do it by a price breakdown, if they only did the feasibility analysis, it would be around $58,000. It would be an additional $70,000, give or take, to actually conduct an RFP for the city. They would run the RFP, they would send out the proposals for the RFP, they would receive all of the proposals, they would review the proposals, they would come back to the city and give us their third-party opinion, disinterested opinion, in which they felt was the best option for the city. They, in the feasibility analysis, they would also look at current operations and see if the current way the fieldhouse is run in-house is sustainable, and if that would be the best direction for the city versus a third-party company as well. So all of those options are there. The purpose of the $140,000 number, because it doesn't totally add up, is built into their proposal, is if they do the RFP, and if we decide to go with a third party, there is the option to do negotiations and have Hundin Partners do those negotiations on their behalf, and they have an hourly rate that was broken out into the proposal, so that when you include that, plus any travel that they might incur, that's not included in the final $128,000. That's where the $140,000 number comes from, so not to succeed. The resolution does include an expenditure of hot funds, which is where the costs would come if the council decides to do that. And now entertain any questions.
Thank you. Council questions? City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Keys, you and I have been discussing this, and just for the benefit of council, I believe from our conversation, we have the ability to direct Hundin Partners to, if we so choose to do an RFP, to include whatever it is we want in the RFP. A lot of that would be dependent on the outcome of what they determine once they do the analysis. So that could include a hybrid model, where maybe the city retains ownership of the building, and maybe there's exterior management, or in collaboration with ours, or even potentially, if the council so chooses to entertain, maybe sale of the building or anything else, those options could all be listed in the RFP, so that any entity interested could respond in such a manner for us to then evaluate that, right?
Absolutely, and I think one of the key points there is that we did reach out to some other companies that'll do a feasibility analysis. At the end of the day, those companies want to do a feasibility analysis, so that you will go with them. Hundin Partners will do the feasibility analysis and give you the truth about the best, what they feel like is the best option for the city when it comes to the fieldhouse. They do not have a stake in it, they are not going to try and take the building over. They will not tell you that a third-party management company is the best way to go if they do not feel like that is the best way to go. As Mr. Finch says, if they do the feasibility analysis, they will give you what they consider is their unvarnished opinion about how you should operate the fieldhouse, or what you should do with it. And then, as he stated, once they get to the RFP process, if that's what you decide to do, you can guide and direct that RFP process, so that it is not, again, it won't be a third party that comes in and says, eh, you know, really, you should go with us.
Thank you. Councilman McNabb.
Thank you. Mr. Keys, can you tell me when maybe the last time a feasibility study or analysis was done at the fieldhouse?
I know there was one done somewhere around 2015, and that is the one that actually, the findings of that analysis was that the current operating structure, which I think at that time was a third party, was not beneficial to the city, and they recommended that the city take the fieldhouse over, bring it in-house, and I believe the recommendation was to put it under the Parks Department at that time, and that is why it ran, I think from 2016 on until earlier this year, they were under the Parks Department.
So Mayor, like a comprehensive plan, everything else, these things, it's been about 10 years, they need to be reviewed, so this is a kind of a win-win situation. I mean, we can get a feasibility study at a certain cost, but if we need something further, we can move that direction. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman McNabb. Got a second by Councilman Pennebaker. Any further discussion? Mr. Koontz.
So we're approving the contract for the feasibility analysis and the RFP?
So, if I may, the reason that we put it this way is the optional RFP, and it's actually laid out as optional in the deal. The one thing I would suggest is approving the whole thing, so that if, after the feasibility analysis, you want to do the RFP, it's already approved, saves some time, we just go right into it after bringing the results to council, rather than having to come back and ask for that money again in another resolution at a different meeting. If we stop at the feasibility analysis, then we stop at the feasibility analysis.
All right, any further questions? All right, with that, we have a motion on the table and a second. Please vote. All right, thank you, Mr. Keys. Next up, Item 5D, request, I'm sorry, Fire Department EMS Response Cart for Special Events. Economic Development Director Victor Barrera.
Yes, good evening, and thank you. What you have up for your consideration is an application from the Fire Department for the use of hot funds to purchase a specialized piece of equipment. The piece of equipment is estimated to cost approximately $74,000, and this would assist them with their response time and their ability to manage emergency situations specifically for and during signature events. It's my understanding that in years past, what they've done, and up until recently, what they do is they use a golf cart flatbed as their emergency response vehicle, and they have made do with that. It's not ideal, but this device, this apparatus, this piece of equipment would definitely help with the response and efficiency. But here this evening is Chief Caneely and Assistant Fire Chief Chase that could provide you with additional insights on this piece of equipment and how that would help with our signature events.
Mr. Chief Chase, are you, want to make some comments additionally? Just here to answer questions? All right. Come on, come up with some good ones. Mr. Vera Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. So more of a comment than anything, but we trained on these in Dallas Fire Rescue, and these are game changers. What they do is they allow the response time, whereas you can pre-stage them aside where regular ambulances or fire apparatus can't get to. And as an example, the nature preserve down here of Mountain Creek Parkway, before we got one of these, we would have to haul our equipment and ourselves down there sometimes a mile to get to a patient, and depending on what was going on, that's not very good. So definitely a better chance to intercede a lot faster. And of course, I know, I'm assuming that you use it for special events, but can you deploy it as well?
Yes, sir. So the primary purpose of this is for special events. As we continue to grow these, you know, with the July 4th event, you know, a few years ago with 4,000 people, not necessarily, this past July 4th, we had 8,000, 10,000 people. We had, I don't know, six or seven patient contacts with that, which also included, unfortunately, a cardiac arrest that happened right before the event started. The guys on the cart actually worked that. Had that happened inside the park, we would have had definite transport issues with that, but luckily, that was outside. The other factor in this is a, what's included in the quote is a slide-out fire pump that we can change the bed on the back of it into a fire pump to address our wildland urban interface issues we have, and at the same time, we can also deploy it as a wildland paramedic unit, which we could get reimbursed from the state for the use of our equipment. So it will help offset some of the costs that we have for this program.
Just one more comment, sir. So as we prepare for the LAD property and whatnot, this thing will get down in there and get, especially where no fire apparatus or ambulance can get to. So that's it, sir. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Koontz.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, because this is, the use is primarily for special events, it does qualify for hot fund expenditure? Okay, thank you.
Okay. One question. What's this runoff of? Is it gas-powered?
Yes, it is gas.
I was looking for a tailpipe.
The one we're at, looking at is a Can-Am. We do have two sets of tires for it, one off-road, one street tires to run the parades and things like that, so we don't wear these out. And it does come with a trailer with storage, so we can haul it. You know, we don't have to drive it through the city. Should there be, you know, the city event, we can haul it down there with our utility truck, which we have, you know, in the department's fleet.
All right.
Okay. From my understanding, within, I believe it's six to eight months, should you approve this is when we could have it up and running. So, hopefully by next July 4th, we would have it.
Thank you. Council, any further questions or comments? Not, I'll entertain a motion?
No moves.
Motion to approve by Councilman Mac Burnett, seconded by Councilwoman Karen Cherry Brown. Please vote. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. Last item on agenda, item 5E, Consider Resolution Authorizing Improvement of Incentive Grants. North Texas Care Clinic, 726 South Cockro Hill. Mr. Barrera?
Yes, thank you. This evening, which you have for consideration, is a grant application from an existing business, a longtime business in the community that's looking to make a move, only because they're experiencing quite a bit of growth. And they found an opportunity for them to stay in the community as well as have an opportunity to purchase the property. So, the property is 726 South Cockro Hill. It's on the east side of Cockro Road, just, it's one of the outlots by the Winco. This property has been vacant for some time and certainly in need of some TLC. And so, what we have is the original grant request at approximately $229,000 for the complete interior and exterior renovations. And at this point, it's expected that once the renovations are completed, that the property will increase by more than 50%. This is the total breakdown of the proposed improvements in its totality. You have to break down with the paint, the landscaping, the signage. This was all presented to the DCEDC a couple of weeks ago. And after their presentation, they recommended a dollar amount of approximately $98,000. And what you have in front of you is the breakdown of the $98,000. And that was directed towards landscaping, signage, facade and architecture, and pavement. What you have here is just the proposed landscape plan and some of the plantings that are proposed around the property at the building foundation and in the parking area, just to just accentuate the parking, the property, and also use it as a deterrent for some of the nuisances that the owners are currently experiencing with adjacent properties and adjacent uses. But you have here is the proposed signage, both on the street and on the wall of the building, some of the pictures of the interior condition and just the work that was necessary. Just aerial picture, and again, just pictures of the condition of the building, and just the condition of the parking lot and just how there's areas that just need to be repaired and/or resurfaced. And what you have on the bottom right is just an image of what the landscaping and the finished product will look like once all the renovation and improvements are completed. And this is just an artist's rendering of the completed product, both exterior and interior. What this means for the city is we're talking a potential job creation of an additional 14 jobs. The current estimated revenue is half a million dollars, but after the expansion and improvements, you're looking at an increase of a double in revenue. The current property value is estimated being approximately 933,000, and the estimated value after the improvements are approximately 1.4. This evening, we have representatives from North Texas Care Clinic to answer any questions, but really to share with you what this move means for them and how it impacts the community. Thank you.
Evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak on behalf of North Texas Care Clinic. My name is Dr. Kelly Randall, and I'm also standing here on behalf of my partner, Dr. Terrence Taylor. He established North Texas Care Clinic here in the city of Duncanville 10 years ago this November and is a son of the city. He was raised here, went to high school here, mother still lives in the community. And so, it's very important for us that as our business and our brand expands, that we stay here in the city of Duncanville to serve the people of Duncanville. We see a lot of patients in our office who otherwise would not receive care. They're either underinsured or have Medicaid, and not sure how much you guys know about the current face of what medicine looks like. More and more physicians are actually going to a cash pay model because it just is not lucrative and not able to keep the doors open and the bills paid. But it's important to us that we continue to care for this community and the people of this community. And so, our vision is very bright and broad for the practice. We are currently at 529 West Wheatland, so we are moving to a bigger space, more visibility. We have ambitions of offering urgent care services in the future, which currently does not exist in the city of Duncanville. We provide Saturday hours for patients because it doesn't do you any good to have insurance if you can't use it. Most doctors' offices are open Monday through Friday, so we do have Saturday hours for our residents. We are also looking at expanding and becoming a federally funded healthcare center, which offers a lot of benefits to those patients who are self-pay and cannot afford to utilize healthcare services. So, we are super grateful to even be in front of you and to have this opportunity. But again, we could have moved our practice anywhere, and Duncanville is where we were born and where we will stay. So, we appreciate your support, and any questions you have, I'd be glad to answer.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Barrera, and thank you for keeping your business here in Duncanville first and foremost. I think on one of your slides, and I didn't catch the page, you showed the construction cost or architectural cost at 149,000. That's what the grant is. And my question is, what, in terms of the actual cost of the facade and architectural, and I'm assuming that means interior as well. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the, that's the plans, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong. It's the development of the permit plans, the plans for the exterior improvements. If you look at, bear with me here, the roof had to be recompleted.
I was going to say, it's a long story.
Not a problem. My name is Labor Michelle Terrell, and I'm actually project managing the project. The facade and architectural is just primarily the external portion of the building, primarily the roof, because it is traditional tar and gravel. And the building has actually suffered from quite a bit of leakage, water intrusion, and things of that nature. So, part of the facade included replacing the roof from tar and gravel, upgrading it to a TPO type of roof style, in addition to the metal seams. Those metal seams are the original seams of the building. And from some of the pictures, you see that some of the seams are openings. There are openings at the seams, which also causes further water intrusion in the building. So, that's the facade and architectural piece.
Okay. Not necessarily interior finish out?
None. The only thing that we had asked for as far as the interior was for the mold remediation, but to my knowledge, we were not approved for the mold remediation, but we did take care of the mold remediation because it being a healthcare or a medical facility, we wanted to ensure that the doctors as well as the patients would be breathing in healthy air.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. I appreciate that. Is any part of the interior, exterior rain damage currently covered under insurance?
The only thing that was covered under the insurance was actually the AC units, because the AC units sit on top of the building, but we did not request for the city to reimburse for the AC coverage.
All right, thank you. And I think the last question from me. Out of the 149,000 for the architectural cost here, what percentage does that represent of the total cost for that architectural, facade and architectural improvement?
Of the total budget, the 149, that would be approximately... The total budget is 229. Hold on, I have it right here.
And I guess as a little caveat, the building, we are actually currently leasing the building to own. And so, when we took over, we did not know that there was molds. We were actually stripping the wallpaper to paint, and all of this was a lovely surprise. So, we were not budgeting for a, you know, what's turned into basically over a $300,000 project. So, we submitted for all the things that we felt that we were eligible for, but all of this is, was not what we planned for. We planned for paint.
Well, let me restate. I think you might have answered, but I want to be clear on this. So, for the facade and architectural that is represented under that $149,000 request, is that the total cost for your facade and architectural work?
No, it's not.
Okay, so, the doctors or the owners of the company are picking up some amount of that?
Yes.
And that's what I'm looking for? What is that? Do you know what that amount is?
Our total budget now is up to 380.
380.
Is what we're looking at to do the entire project.
Oh, that's for the entire project?
Yeah. And so, the vast majority of that is the roof, new floors, because this building, I'm not sure if you guys recall, but it was previously a care now. Then it got taken over by a pain management clinic, and then it sat vacant for 18 months. So, all of this damage occurred over 18-month period where it was not being cared for. So, we literally have stripped down to the studs the entire building, had to redrawall the entire building, new flooring throughout. There was nothing we could salvage. So, we're, that is the infrastructure budget. This is not even outfitting the clinic. This is literally just to get us in the door.
Okay.
But it's about 45%, because they've approved about 68,000 of that 149 facade and architectural budget.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
Gotcha.
I should have phrased it better. I'm sorry. Last question, what was the vote from the DCEDC on this request?
My recollection is that it was a unanimous, unanimous vote on the 98,000.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Gooden? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I kind of recall watching the DCEDC meeting with this, and the exterior, you were not anticipating that because of the nuisance and the damage that's been caused by just vandalism and that created a higher budget and more exterior necessities that needed to be taken care of because of unanticipated damage that was caused, correct?
Correct.
Yes, so, with the unanticipated money required to bring it up to speed just to get into the door, and then you remove the wallpaper, and then the mold was exposed, and you start discovering other things. So, what I'm getting to is the investment you're making just to stay in Duncanville. I appreciate you wanting to stay and the work that you're doing and the investment that you're making in the property and working to own the building so that way you can be permanently here in Duncanville and providing service to a demographic that is, there is a gap. So, I appreciate what you're doing and wanting to stay here. And I do remember DCEDC, I think unanimously supporting it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilman Coontz?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I think I've heard you say a couple of times that y'all are leasing the building, so you don't actually own the building itself, correct? And then, so, with all of the expenses involved with getting it back up to shape, is the property owner putting anything into?
No.
Unanimously, no.
She only helped facilitate with the insurance claim. So, we were able to utilize the insurance proceeds for the AC units. But because it's just a short-term lease, there is actually a contract on the building as well. So, it's really a lease to own, and at some point in the near future, we'll, you know, especially once the project is completed, then we'll convert it to an ownership.
Are we allowed to ask how long the lease is for? How long is the lease for?
Right now, it's for one year. One year.
They have a lease for one year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Mac Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to commend you, as Councilmember Gooden did as well, for doing this and going the extra steps. City manager, I'll ask this, but I always like to see return on investment on this stuff as well, so if we can make sure we do that. But I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Okay. Council, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Mac Burnett.
I second.
Got a second by Councilwoman Karen Cherry Brown. Any further discussion? Comments? None seen. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, we'll move on to item six, staff and board reports. Council briefing on chapter? Okay. Okay. Chief Stogner? You're up. We're actually going to drop back on an item that we missed in the briefing session because of a time constraint, and that's a briefing on the Pyburn Park speeding analysis.
Thank you. Thank you again. And again, not resigning. So, I wanted to provide you all with some information. As you can imagine, we get a tremendous amount of complaints, whether it's speeding, other things, and it's ultimately up to me to determine where our resources are pushed to help minimize or eradicate these things. So, I wanted to bring this to your attention so you know that we do a lot of analysis when it comes to speeding, because it's really easy for us to do, and it provides us very good data on, okay, is it, is the information that we're receiving, are the perception actually true? And is it something that we need to go out there and enforce? So, this is what this will talk about. It's going to be very brief. So, just so everybody knows where Pyburn Park is, some historical information. When I started here, that was the community room there at the Hollywood Park, and it had a swimming pool, but they converted it into a park, or we did. It's a very nice park. The speed limit on Estere Avenue in Hepburn is 30 miles an hour. So, our current speed limit signs in that neighborhood far exceed any other subdivision that we have in the city. If you notice, we have 25 15-mile-an-hour speed limit signs, and they are identified as the pink dots. And then we have, excuse me, we have nine 30-minute, 30-mile-per-hour signs, which are in blue. And then the Willow Run Edition, just further south, have the three 40-mile-an-hour speed limit signs, which is depicted there on Daniel Dale Road. So, that entire neighborhood is the prime of facial speed limits, 30 miles an hour. So, there is a tremendous amount of signage out there. Again, and from what I understand, I believe more signs were requested out there as well. And I'm not sure where that is. It's certainly not under my purview. And I'm not sure where that is. It's certainly not under my purview. But just so you know, the traffic code falls under us, obviously. They show the prima facie speed limit as thirty miles an hour in urban district, which is what you have here in fifteen miles an hour in alleyway. And then our city ordinance depicts the same, whether it's on streets or highways or in the alleyway. So there are a tremendous amount of signs there. So our speed limit signs, I'll go back to actually this. So if you see where Hayworth and Astaire intersect, we had one of our, in the middle there, on Astaire Avenue, and one on Avenue of the Stars. So we have multiple jamars that we'll put out. We'll put out normally for about seven days to get us good data. So with that, it analyzed over thirty-seven hundred vehicles during that time. With the speed limit obviously set at thirty, the fastest speed was thirty-six, which showed an enforcement rate of low. So you've noticed there enforcement or enforceable violations, there were zero, which means had we set there, we would not have detained any vehicle. So thirty miles an hour is the speed limit. Yes, you are technically speeding if you're going thirty-one miles an hour. Is it reasonable to issue you a citation for thirty-one miles an hour? Probably not. So we set an enforceable rate. So what's reasonable? What is reasonable to you as far as speeding? So hours is ten miles an hour over. If you are traveling ten miles an hour over the speed limit, it is reasonable that you should know that you're speeding. And that is what we classify as enforceable. So with that, there were no vehicles over that enforceable rate during that time with thirty-seven hundred vehicles analyzed. So when I get that data, how can I add people out there when there's so many other high enforceable ratings that we receive on these speed analysis? So this is just data that I use when I deploy my resources. So with that, I'll take any questions.
So Chief, based on that data, is it fair to say that you don't believe that the resources of the Duncanville Police Department are adequately, would be adequately used by positioning them around Pyburn Park?
That's correct.
And so you believe that our resources should be used in other areas of the city where we have similar data that actually depicts a higher need?
Yes, sir.
And Chief, would you also suggest that the results of this analysis here would not validate the use of speed bumps, the necessity for the use of speed bumps?
That's correct. The data is pretty obvious.
And I have a couple of questions from other council members, but I want to state that early on, I met with a couple, I think there were three concerned citizens out there. And I think some of what their concerns were that were in isolated cases, they witnessed families or mothers and children crossing from the portion of the park that's on the south side of Astaire, going to the, where the walking trails are on the north side, and that there were some, what they would call close calls, cars coming through there. They were under the impression that they were speeding, but of course, as pedestrians, it's hard to determine if they're speeding or not. So at this point, any concerns about that? If they witnessed anything like that, they'd report it to police, but your conclusion is that there's no need to do anything, no additional signage necessary, no speed bumps, no other means to do anything, because you're showing that you found no violations over ten-six to ten-fourteen? Okay.
That's correct. And I'll emphasize, when people are crossing a roadway, they need to make sure that they are doing that in a crosswalk. And they, there are crosswalks that are marked there at the stop sign.
Okay, so that's in that area where the two parks are adjacent from each other?
That's, there should be. Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, could we, could we double check that and?
Of course.
If not, I'm sure we.
So at the intersection here at Astaire and Gable, I would encourage people to cross in a crosswalk.
Well, that smaller circle at the bottom, that area of park, that's where it was reported to me that some close calls occurred with people crossing, as they naturally would be inclined to do, to go from one area of the park to the other.
Absolutely.
So is there a crosswalk right there?
I'm not sure if there's one there at Lombard or Stewart, but I'm quite positive there's one there at Astaire and.
Okay. All right, thank you. We're loading up with questions here. So Councilman Pennebaker?
Thank you, Chief. Question about, so looking at the results, the average speed is twenty, so that's not bad at all, you'd think, right there. Has there been any consideration or thought to changing the speed limit around the park to twenty? And would that have an impact as far as how the neighbors would perceive the traffic around that area? Would that slow it down some, where you're not having the top speed of thirty-six coming through there?
Well, I don't, I don't believe so. I'm not a traffic engineer. I could not answer that, to be honest with you. All I'm providing you all is with the current speed limit of thirty, if we are enforcing any, or the need to enforce any speeding from that.
Okay.
I will say, with the addition of these stop signs there at Hayworth, and then you have there at Avenue of the Stars and Astaire, it's not a very long stretch of roadway to be able to get up to that speed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of along those lines, so, I mean, is there any way to objectively determine what speeds are, because if they were reduced to twenty, I mean, what speeds are, again, some way to objectively determine if they're actually safer? To say, okay, with this stretch of road, like you said, and with this degree of bend, with these adjacent perpendicular streets, I mean, is there, is there any kind of data to say, okay, in that particular area, you know, fifteen miles per hour objectively is the safest speed, or twenty miles? I mean, is there any way with that?
I can't, no, sir. What I can tell you is, we have not investigated any pedestrian accidents in that area.
City Manager?
So, thank you, Mayor. So Councilmember Coontz, I mean, really, it's a legitimate question. It's a fair question. It's probably the chief, with all due respect, he's a great guy and knows a lot about police work, but he's not a traffic engineer. And that's the question, I think, that you're asking really relates to a traffic engineer, you know, whether or not the council wanted to invest the money in doing some traffic engineering analysis around that. I mean, we certainly talk about that and discuss that as a, as an additional topic, but that's really where you would get that level of detail.
Now, I just had one additional question. So with, so I've been down this road several times before you were chief. And multiple streets in my district, you know, Center, Cherry, there were several acting where similar study had been done, and a couple of them multiple times, and the same results, right? The data shows that, you know, no additional speed measures are warranted. And so this enforcement rating is low, but you mentioned that there are other places in the city where these studies have been done that have shown to have a high enforcement rating?
That's correct, yes.
Since we're not talking about those, I won't ask where they are, but it's good to know.
Councilman Mac Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I guess my question is, you know, I do see this, and I appreciate this information. Now, how often or frequent are speed analysis done? And, you know, is it based upon, like, you're getting a bunch of calls for like this area? And when is a decision made to do a speed analysis?
So when we got these devices, we, when I say we get a lot, we do get a lot, and we do send these out. For instance, we just did one at Hill City. We got some information there, and I have that data now. If we don't have these complaints, and I have our traffic division go out and deploy them in areas, that way, when we do have this information, or we get something from a particular neighborhood, I can pull that data because we have it there, and I can say, listen, there's not really much we can do about this. We'll set it back out. Maybe there's an anomaly. And let's be honest, again, thirty-one miles an hour speeding, the speed limit's thirty. There are anomalies when it comes to is somebody in an emergency when they're, when they're driving down. You know, I heard some people saying, well, I stand on the side of the road, and I can see them speeding. I've been doing this job for twenty-seven years, and I have yet to be able to see a vehicle speeding and say, well, they're going forty-eight miles an hour, or forty-nine miles an hour. That's why we have radars. That's why we use this data for that information.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Gooden?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. We have gotten, and I'm pretty sure Councilwoman Cherry Brown, because this is her district, gotten a number of calls about the concerns around the Pyburn Park. And I've asked if we can just at least do a study to see if the speed limit at this particular park is consistent with other speed limits around the other parks throughout the city of Duncanville. I can't remember. I do know I did receive a response. I can't remember what the response was, if it was consistent with the other speeds around the other parks. So with that said, with that, with this being consistent, and this is, this data doesn't necessitate higher enforcement, then I would like to also bring back up something that I brought up when I was first elected, is that we kind of go out and do a walk in certain neighborhoods and educate the citizens. I think it would be beneficial if, and I'm not giving a direction to you, talking to the city manager, throwing a recommendation out, that occasionally, we walk some neighborhoods, and neighborhoods that we know that we have these type of concerns, or any type of code concerns, to educate the public and let them know. You know, these, we did do a study. We came out, we saw that it wasn't, it was low enforcement rating, and.
Mayor, it's not on the agenda. This is about Pyburn Park.
Pyburn Park, yes. Okay, so well, let's start with Pyburn Park. We go out and we educate the neighborhood of what we found in Pyburn Park, because those calls still continue to come in. We can have this discussion here, show what was, what data was received after the studies, and then still receive phone calls about the concerns. So is there anything that we can do in educating and outreach?
Mayor, and Councilmember Gooden, I appreciate the spirit of the question and the interest in educating the public, and to certainly acknowledge your comment, and thank you. I also have to be careful because we have to balance the resources of the staff, right, and limited staff. What I will share with you is whether it's Pyburn Park, you know, we talked about it the last council meeting about other sweeps, that maybe that's a strategy that we can employ when we do that in an area like Pyburn Park, when we get to that. I think that it would be challenging just to ask police officers or code enforcement officers to walk a neighborhood like Pyburn Park. But I think as we work on some of those other larger community sweeps and education opportunities, there's an opportunity to share some of that stuff.
City Manager, could we? Oh, it's all right.
Thank you for that. And I do understand we are low on resources and staffing, so maybe that this is something that we can tag team amongst council whenever we have time on certain areas. Well, Pyburn Park is what we're talking about, Pyburn Park. And just come up with a plan. I don't know. I'm just always interested in keeping the public informed and let them know that they're being heard and we're listening to them.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. City Manager, is there a way for us to post this on our website in some way that explains in the manner that Councilwoman Gooden's talking about, that this is an example to everyone throughout the city that, because I've heard complaints, I complained myself on my street about speeding cars, but this is a good example right here of a study that's been done that when people call and ask about these types of situations, they might have access to an example. This is a good example right here. We got enough citizen feedback about a perceived speeding issue, and we're able to go out and put the resources out there. And here's what it came up with. And it might give food for thought for people that are concerned about what's going on in their neighborhood.
Mayor, thank you. Yes, I mean, obviously, we have the recording right now that we're doing. We can share that, and maybe a direct link to that. As the chief was saying, and the chief and I have discussed some different policing strategies that we'll be sharing with you in the near future. There's some different things that will be, that we can do as we work throughout the city in terms of this type of data that we'll be able to share with the public. It's certainly, certainly acknowledge everybody's concerns and the comments that you're getting from the public, and we want to be mindful of those, as you've said, to make sure that they understand that we're listening. But I would also encourage, when people do think that there is a problem, to feel free to send an email to the council, send an email to city administration. We'll work with the chief and the police department, that if we don't already have data, we can go out and collect some of the data from time to time, because it's important, too. That's a lot of times how we start to learn that there's an issue, and that we can go out in that particular section of the community.
Right. Thank you, Chief, but you're not done.
You're good.
All right.
Yes, sir.
We'll go on to item six A, council briefing on chapter four, animal and fowl. Okay, we got a change of plans here. Assistant Chief Wilcock and Animal Control Officer Chamberlain?
Hello, Council, City Manager, Mayor. Okay, so I'm here to discuss the animal ordinance with you again. But I don't really want to waste your time. I really don't want to waste your time going through all these slides again, all twenty slides. I've seen them twice, two or three times already, so I know you know what's on them. I'd rather spend the time talking about the things that I know that you're concerned with, and I know because of the feedback that I got regarding the stuff that we presented before. So I won't waste time on the definitions and the the grammatical changes that were made, and I'll just get right to the stuff that I know that you want to talk about. And that's dealing with the foul ordinance part of things. So what I did was, I wrote down, I took down a few questions that I received, and I want to provide those answers for you so that you have an understanding. So one of the questions I received was, what's driving the need for the proposal for the foul ordinance? And like I said before, we want to operate within best practices, and we want to be in concert with our neighboring cities. We often help each other out, you know. We have one animal control officer, and sometimes he gets help from Cedar Hill and from De Soto, and we all kind of want to function the same way and make sure we're doing things the right way. And it's also related to the high call volume that we get regarding the file. So the next question that I had presented to me was, how many file-related incidents or calls are we getting? So I'll say this, I had my crime analysis person run the numbers for me. It's not something that our system is set up to keep track of. So she had to figure out how to do that. And it might surprise you to know that between August twenty twenty-four and August twenty twenty-three, there were seven hundred and ninety-nine calls, animal calls, that were related to, the four words she concentrated on was chickens, hens, fowls, and roosters. Seven hundred and ninety-nine. That's a lot. So there's a reason why these cities are making adjustments and making changes to their ordinances to try to address the problems, you know, with the file. Another question that I was presented with was, how will this impact the citizens who currently own file? I don't think that it's going to have a substantial impact. You know, I know that some of you were concerned about them not being able to make a little extra income and things of that nature. I think if anything, it's going to be a positive impact, and significantly so on the community. One thing it's going to allow us to do is control the amount of file that's within the city. Right now, we don't have those controls. It'll allow us to track the people that own, keep up with the people that own the files. And it allows us to put some educational material out there on our website and require the owners of the file to take a a course and get a certificate and present to us to show them that, you know, they understand, you know, the right and proper ways of keeping file. And I think that's, that's very important. It comes down to a health and safety issue. And I think that's, that's very important. It comes down to a health and safety issue, and it comes down to a quality of life issue for the rest of our citizens. Not every citizen in Duncanville owns chickens and roosters and stuff like that. The majority don't. And, and they deserve that good quality of life. And I'm gonna share a story with you while I'm talking about that. Uh, I shared this story with someone else just the other day. Assistant Chief Tierina came in one night at three AM to talk to the troops, you know? You just want to encourage people and let them know, hey, keep doing the job you're doing and stuff like that. And he saw me the next day, and he said, I got here at three AM and there was two calls holding. And he said, you won't believe what they were. And I said, what? They were rooster calls. Noise disturbances at three AM, two for rooster calls. I mean, this is, this is a problem. And I think, I think one thing that people think is that there has to be roosters for there to be eggs. That, that, it's not true. But, you know, he's the expert. He can explain all of that, you know? And I, I would like for him to es- to explain, you know, some of the things that he's going to have to go through, because I do know that one concern was, uh, everything needed to be on the website. You need to be able to fill out your application. You need to be able to get your permit. You need to be able to pay, do everything on the website. Well, we don't want to do it that way. Yeah, we'll put the application on the website so that they could fill that out, but he needs to be hands-on with this. He needs to, he needs to come out and inspect. He needs to, you know, see what's going on. I don't want to take that from you. I'll let you explain what you have to do.
Yeah, so, um, it would just be going out there to, you know, obviously make sure they have proper, uh, chicken coop set up. Um, we've got a lot, and you'll see in the ordinance, maybe that's where you're going back to, uh, oh, no. So we have a lot of different, um, things, wording now in the new revised ordinance, uh, where they need an exercise yard, um, uh, the amount of space here, what we're doing from the number of fowl they can have to their, uh, their property line. I feel going out there is going to be the easiest thing for us, and we, we had mentioned there was, uh, something about the, the selling of eggs. Um, we, we know that the hens can carry diseases, and that can go from straight to the egg, the eggshell, the egg itself, salmonella. So we really don't encourage citizens to sell eggs, um, that are owning fowl out of their residential backyard. Uh, going back to the inspection, it, it's just going to give us a, give me an opportunity, uh, to look at their property, get the educational course certificate. We will then have a permit, uh, which is what we have right now with our livestock, where we're able to actually see where the, if these livestock are loose. We have owner information, phone number, address, where we can contact them and say, hey, your goat's out, your horse is out. We don't currently have that with, with fowl, so we have no idea who owns fowl, uh, in the city.
And with that, I know that this is the chart that we presented, uh, the previous two times. And, uh, I received some feedback of some alternate wording, and this is, now, it's somewhat like what we had, so what I did was, we took it and we put it on, in chart form, so you could see it better. So I, I'm not sure what the big difference is on the wording, but I wanted to, to present that because I know that, that the, uh, the previous chart was an issue and this was suggested, uh, wording. But all that could, all that could be worked out, but what I'm asking you is that when it's time to vote for the ordinance, that, you know, that we move forward on this. Anybody have any questions?
Uh, Mayor, council, just for kind of where we're at and where we're going to go with this. We didn't want to just bring this to you to vote on tonight. We wanted you to see this one more time. The plan is, and that's why there's a red line version of this attached to your agenda tonight. The plan is to bring this back at the next council meeting and ask you to vote and consider this updated ordinance. So, you know, please take some time. I know you've got a lot on your plate, and I know you have meetings literally every single night this week, but, uh, this really is important to the police department. That's something that they've been really spending some time on, working for. They, they're really requesting the help on this, so if you do have anything, please feel free to email Assistant Chief Wilcox relative to that red line version, because we would like to bring this back at the next council meeting.
Um, I do have a question. Um, you, you, you had it on a slide a minute ago that showed acreage?
Yes.
Uh, can you go back to that one? Not this one?
Okay, the other one?
Yeah, the other one. Okay, so up to ten fowl on a half acre. And what seems to control that to the degree that I'm looking at lots in traditional neighborhoods, house by house by house, where some of those are half acre in size, and somebody can have ten chickens in their backyard there, provided they can keep these, um, distances from adjacent residential dwellings. So it's not property line, it's the house. So if somebody had a deep backyard, they maybe could achieve this. Um, and, uh, I, I wasn't aware that you could have that many chickens, because that half acre caught my attention because there's lots of residential neighborhoods, um. Now, up in my neck of the woods, it's not uncommon to, uh, I'm on in excess of a half an acre. Uh, it's, you know, wooded lots and there's, you know, barriers between neighbors, natural tree growth and whatnot. But you get down into some conventional neighborhoods on the south end of town, and all of a sudden, you got ten chickens in your backyard. That's, uh, but I know it's the roosters that are guilty of crowing, and by the way, I didn't know that you could, city boy that I am, that you could have eggs without the rooster. Do the roosters know this, by the way? Um, well, that was news, that was educational piece for me, but, but the, um, it seems like a lot, but is that standard for, uh, for cities?
So what we had up before, what we presented before is, is, uh, was, is, is basically what we're seeing around in this area. And this, this particular chart is from one of our neighboring cities. Um, it mirrors one of our, our neighboring cities. The, the chart, the, the, this chart right here is, this, this was the recommended changes that came to me, um, from someone, and so I wanted to present that to you, so you have that to look at as well.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Penbaker?
And thank you. Um, just, uh, one of the questions about the seven hundred calls, do you have any idea what the results of those seven hundred calls were? Did anybody get, was there anyone that got in trouble or fined or?
Uh, I...
Okay. That was a wild shot. Okay, um, the, yeah, I'd, I'd like this chart. I was looking for it in the, um, revised part, but you're asking about including this new chart in here with the up to six, up to half an acre?
Yeah, so this is how, this is how it's presented to me, like this. And so what I did was I...
Looks familiar.
So what I did was pull that and, well, I didn't do it. Uh, Chamberlain did it. ACO Chamberlain did it. Pull that and put it on there so that you could compare it.
Got it. And Mayor, ten chickens in a half acre backyard's a lot of fun if you have a lot of snakes back there, because they're real fun to watch chase snakes.
I'm learning all kinds of stuff tonight.
Thank you.
Councilman Coontz?
So thank you for showing this to us again, uh, for the third time, maybe the fourth time, because I, we had some briefings in there and then we had a few in here, so, um, and I know we also were talking about dogs, but... So, yeah, of those seven hundred and ninety-nine calls, so what, what was the nature of those calls? I know you mentioned roosters, but just people were saying, hey, they've got too many chickens?
So what I, I, I'll, I'll try to help you. So our, our, our system isn't set up to, to track those type of calls. So basically what she had to do was go in there and create a search. So when she created the search and she put the time parameters in there, then what it did was spit out like ten thousand calls, I believe. So then she went through those ten thousand calls. It took her a long time to do it. Then she went through those ten thousand calls to find out which ones were actually animal calls that he was dispatched to. That way she could remove anything that wasn't, you know, re- related to, uh, you know, you know, the ACO. So, but those calls vary. So it could be, the call could be someone calling about a chicken in the street. Someone could be calling about a, a loose rooster running around or, or crowing, you know, just being loud or... It, it could be any, any call. Those, it, it, but the majority, speaking with ACO Chamberlain, the majority of the calls he get are noise complaints. And I, I know that's been a, a big topic with you all, and I mean...
Yeah, well, I, I know it's a big topic, because I, I wonder if those seven hundred and so calls, five hundred of them are probably from my district, because, I, I mean, this is a, this is a big topic, at least in my district, and I get lots of calls and emails and people asking about this. Obviously, people who are complaining, but then also the people who own the, the fowl, saying, well, I have my rights, et cetera. So, uh, again, I, I really appreciate y'all bringing this back to us. I, the only question I have right now is, what is, so like with code enforcement, I know they can't peek over people's fences, they can't take pictures, you know, there's certain limitations as far as going into people's property to enforce things, and sometimes people put up fences and so... What, what does the enforcement of this look like if, so people have, you know, too many chickens in their backyard, the neighbor reports them? Um, obviously, y'all aren't driving, I mean, you're not driving around looking over people's fences and seeing how many chickens they have. So what, what does the enforcement look like?
Um, so majority, I'll start with the, the actual, when we get a noise complaint, a lot of those come when I'm off duty, three, four in the morning. Um, sometimes they still may be holding when I get here at eight. Um, I'll and go, I'll go investigate. A lot of times, by that point, the rooster is no longer crowing. Um, I still will attempt to leave some literature, maybe a, a notice on the door, just to give them a heads up that we received a complaint. Um, as far as the, looking in, you know, the back, backyard, how many chickens, we depend a lot on audio, um, and just pictures from neighbors. Um, like with our barking dogs, we have, we actually have an affidavit where they're required to produce, uh, three one-minute videos of the dogs barking, and it falls into the same category with the, with the roosters or, you know, the limitation. Right now, the current ordinance is, we don't have a, a limitation on the number of roosters, so, or hens in general. So if we get a call and someone, you know, says, hey, they have forty or fifty, we'll obviously investigate and make sure there's no cruelty, but ordinance-wise, they can, right now, have as many as they want.
I guess my, my question really isn't for, for, uh, officers here, but yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering about how exactly, when we start talking about, you know, the number of chickens that are permitted and, you know, having to go into the yard and count the chickens, you know, somebody says, my neighbor's got too many chickens. Um, you know, the neighbor takes a picture, and so he's counting the chickens in the picture if he can't... So I'm just, you know, how, how does the enforcement on this work?
City Attorney, um...
It's like animal. I, you can only have so many dogs, cats, that, you know? It's, it's complaint-based investigation.
But when that complaint comes in...
Your neighbor rats you out, because you got six dogs. And then they produce evidence of that, and the animal control guy gets that, or him or her goes and knocks on the door and said, your neighbor's telling me you got six dogs. No, I only got one. Come on in, I'll show you.
Okay, but my, my real question is...
No, don't come in.
Then I have to go get a warrant. You got to get an administrative warrant based on an investigative...
Let me get my question out. Let me get my question out.
One person at a time can only talk.
All right, so I'm...
I'd ask a question, so I'm still asking a question.
All right, go ahead and finish your questions, please.
See, right, so based on the claim of a neighbor, they, and, I mean, really, this, the question is trying to protect our officers here. I don't want them to have to be in a situation, um, a compromising situation, um, a, a, or a very difficult situation, because we haven't prepared. Um, I know, like with the, we updated the noise ordinance, uh, a year or two ago, and we made sure that we put some language in there that protected the officers or whoever was engaging the citizens. And so that, that's kind of what, what the questions are about, to make sure that they're, they're protected.
You know, and it, it's just like dog. We'll take dogs. I'm, I'm starting to talk about these chickens, ducks, geese and everything, all right. So if you get a dog, what are you supposed to do with the dog? You get a cat, what are you supposed to do with the cat? You're supposed to get it registered, you're supposed to get it vaccinated, you're supposed to have a license. A lot of people don't. And so when I look up your address and I find out in my records, my license records for the city, and I go, they don't have a license for that dog. Now I got probable cause to knock on the door and go, hey, Fido doesn't have a license. And when, so where's Fido? Bring him out, and I go, you know, and then he's got three other dogs. That's how it happens. And, and this chicken thing ain't going to be any different. It's going to be complaint-based and our good officers have to use their wile and ingenuity. It's just like, it's police work to some extent. I mean, we get a, there's a lot of people in jail because somebody's hunch or someone told somebody else about what somebody else was doing, and a good animal control officer can sniff them out.
We, we, it's, he's, he's correct. You know, it's, it's not going to be much different than i- if it was a dog. Um, and sometimes we run into situations where people don't want to be honest or, or, you know, better see what they have and stuff like that, but, you know, it's stuff that we're used to handling, you know, on, on our level and what we do on a daily basis, so it's not something that we can't handle. You know, we'd be able to enforce the ordinance.
Okay, with that, um, city attorney, if we're in a situation where it's an adjacent neighbor that's complaining about the chickens, noise, smell, whatever, what prohibits that neighbor from allowing the animal control officer to go to a second-story window in their house to look down in that backyard, or from a ladder in their backyard to look into the alleged offender's backyard?
That's Fourth Amendment, Marion, that you don't have time and I don't have the bandwidth for. That's, that's a long discussion. But if I have permission to reasonably see it from a public place, and I have permission of the adjacent property owner, and I can view into that area, then I can get a warrant because I actually saw it. But I have to be careful. I can't climb the fence. I can't stand in my vehicle at a public place, but the neighbor can invite me to look in, and that's how it happens.
Thank you. Councilman McBurnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, I like, Councilman Coontz, I appreciate this being done. Uh, y- you know, uh, the, the comment that I made before, and I'm going to make again, the state has a whole different standard that, that they're looking at, and, and so I'm going to suggest that, that you look at what the state's saying and doing, because this is big on that, because, I mean, it sounds like they're trying to open it up, where you can have roosters, you can have this, you can have that. You can do that, and, and, and so I'm just going to suggest that. Thank you.
I would suggest that if that happens, that we buy the house next to the governor, and we're going to get a whole lot of chickens, and we'll see how long that lasts.
All right, any further comments or questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, uh, final item six B, Parks and Recreation Department.
One of the things, Mayor, before you leave this real quick, what I need to know, do you want us to bring back the ordinance with the chicken chart that was in the proposed ordinance or the revised chicken chart? Or do you want to consider both of them? Because I'm having to write this, and I need to know which one you want in there.
Do I have a consensus on the chicken chart?
The chicken chart...
I don't know what the chicken chart is.
All right.
Okay. The chicken chart? That one right there. Do, do we have? Do we have a consensus on that chart that was just up on our screen?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Stevenson? All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Stevenson? Big note.
I, I think that section also leans into rabbits as well. Go back and look at it, but.
Yeah, there was a reference. There was a reference to rabbits.
That's not on the agenda.
Yeah, but I'm not a member of the governing body. So it don't matter.
Mr. Stevenson?
I don't think I could top that. All right, Bart Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation, here to share with you our quarterly report for September through November of 2024. Hi, this is from our park maintenance group. Um, again, I'm not gonna read every bullet on every slide. I'll try to hit the highlights for you. Um, we did have two park staff members who participated in the Traps North Maintenance Rodeo. And those are, that's a competition between all the DFW Metroplex, uh, park maintenance teams on different, uh, different activities. We had, uh, two guys who actually, who made the state competition, which we held this coming February in Allen. And that is, uh, Isaac Andrade and Anthony Longoria. Um, so we're really proud of those guys. Um, we also received our grant from the Tree City USA to hire a city forester. As I just, I know you guys are aware of that, we are still working on hiring that forester. Uh, we're having difficulty finding a qualified applicant, so if you know any foresters out there, send them our way. Some more information from our park maintenance folks. Again, I'm not gonna read every bullet. Just a few highlights here is that, uh, we know we recently moved into the, uh, old fire station for our park maintenance guys and I just wanna take this opportunity to thank, uh, City Manager Finch for the opportunity to allow our guys to move into that space. It's provided some much-needed, um, relief from the crowded service center and the guys really appreciate, uh, those efforts. And we installed new locking, uh, doors, locking remote, locking doors at the, several of our restrooms in our parks, Armstrong, Lakeside and Redbird. Uh, and then we also made some significant repairs to the brick trail in the historical park. Uh, that's the second time this year we've had to do that. Um, I am afraid that within the next couple of years, we're probably need to come back and seek some funds to replace, uh, the entire trail. Again, we don't want to take out those brick trails, we just want to, uh, come in and shore those up and leave the bricks there, of course. Our irrigation division, um, yes?
Sorry, uh, with, with the bricks, so I've noticed, uh, City Manager sold a lot of those bricks, uh, at the historical park, but also at the library with the, the monument for the Nike missile base. A, a lot of those names are starting to get degraded or fading away. And, um, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that, but just, you know, just, just FYI. Uh, but, yeah, both at the historical park and at the library, that, you know, a lot of those people that donated, you know, when they paid for those bricks or whatever, they got their names on those bricks. I'm sure they were hoping they would keep those names on there for a while. So I don't know what kind of restoration can be done on that.
We do have the manufacturer of that brick company. We can give them a call to find out what we need to do. Thank you for being out to our attention. Uh, irrigation crew, uh, we did complete some significant repairs to our well at Waterview Park. Uh, that is a very significant, uh, repair for us because that pond, as you know, uh, provides us water to irrigate Harrington Park, saving the city hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. And then we also, uh, did a hundred and forty-four splash pad inspections. I'm so pleased with the way our first summer went with the splash pad, huge success. I will share with you that we went back and used, uh, um, our tracking data that we use with our economic development folks, um, and we, uh, had almost a forty percent increase in usage year over year in Armstrong Park, primarily due to the improvements to the Gidsville and the new splash pad. So that's a great, 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 great accomplishment. Um, looking to our park maintenance measurables, um, we had hosted a hundred and ten ballfield reservations, almost three thousand folks participating in those. Um, we installed a new periwether monitoring, uh, weather station at Harrington Park. Uh, we talked about that at our last quarterly report. So again, great things going on with our athletics folks. Moving to our Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board, uh, in addition to our curb appeal winners and our business award, beautification award winner for the quarter, uh, the board also hosted several events. Uh, they had a community cleanup at Willow Run Park, the fall sweep at Lakeside Park, seed work day at Lakeside Park, uh, Arbor Day Celebration and tree planting at Armstrong Park, and they collected pumpkins, uh, at the Dale Hopkins Senior Center here recently and donated those pumpkins to a local wildlife refuge. Moving to our recreation center, uh, measures, we had a hundred and three new memberships over the quarter, uh, over eight thousand visits. Again, you'll see some of our programs there that we host on a regular basis. Um, I'll highlight Jazzercise this quarter. Um, every time I peek in those doors, uh, it seems like there's more and more folks doing Jazzercise. That's something that's been around a really long time that you think would fade away at some point, but it hasn't here in Duncanville. Um, it's never been stronger here in Duncanville, so I'm so proud of our Jazzercise folks. Uh, we had three events we participated in the last quarter with National Night Out with our police department, uh, Family Field Day and our Boo Bash, which saw over sixteen hundred visitors at, at the fieldhouse for that event. And, uh, again, another great success. Some upcoming events, we have Cookies with Santa on December fourteenth. And I didn't intentionally skip over our event coming this Friday. Uh, that's not officially a Parks and Recreation event, but we will be there to help pull that event off with, uh, all of our teams here in Duncanville. We have Cookies with Santa on Saturday, December fourteenth. A family game night on Friday, December twentieth. January is our traditional membership drive at the recreation center. We can get huge, uh, significant discounts on your annual memberships. And then, of course, our Daddy Daughter Dance coming up on February fifteenth. Moving to the senior center, we had thirty-three new and renewed memberships over the quarter. Uh, again, over twenty-eight hundred visits, continued our, our meal program as we talked about in the briefing session. You can see there are all the monthly events there that happen, uh, on a regular basis. And I love the picture, that's a new event here. We have, uh, chair volleyball that has recently started. They're really trying to get that going. It's been a slow start, but we're hoping to get the, the attendance up. And, uh, you can see they're having a really good time with that. Our last slide here is our bond election projects. As you're aware, we, uh, completed Armstrong Park over the past year. Um, Harrington Park, we, uh, you approved the contract tonight to be forward with phases one and three. Very excited about that. Uh, construction will begin in January. The, uh, contractor was actually here tonight and had a chance to visit with him. We'll be getting together soon to, to begin those planning efforts on, uh, starting, uh, again, this January. Trails, we're going to, uh, again, that's phase three of the Harrington project of the bridge and the trail connection to Waterview Park. And then a little bit about, uh, the two master plan processes. Uh, we do anticipate getting the final concepts from Half and Associates, uh, within two weeks to share with the committee, and then we'll be bringing that forward to council for your consideration in the very near future. Uh, and the Dog Park Master Plan, we just recently received over the last day, two days, um, the final concept plans for that project as well. I'll be sending that out to the committee tomorrow. Um, and then the anticipation, uh, the next step is to meet with the park board next Monday night at their meeting, and then it'll be coming to council again, um, Friday, the first meeting in January. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Um, we were at the Boo Bash. That was a different kind of event. It was huge. It felt so big. Me and my wife were there from, before it started, we both volunteered. She was face painting, I was over on the gym side. And when it began, there was a line out the door that never stopped. That line lasted from, you know, six to eight, and then after eight, I don't know what time they ended up getting done. Um, was it, I guess, the, you have any measurables on some of the prior ones that they had there? You said sixteen hundred, which was one of my questions.
Yeah. We believe sixteen hundred i- is, if not a record, is close to a record attendance. Uh, you know, we moved down to the fieldhouse a few years ago due to that very reason of, uh, the fieldhouse, or the rec center and the library could just no longer handle the now people who came to that event. Uh, we did note that the lines were very long this year, and so we'll be, uh, game planning for next year about how we can reduce those lines and make those experiences a little bit better for our folks. But, uh, yeah, it was a, it was overwhelming almost.
We, yeah, we saw a lot of happy faces. I, I stayed on the gym side. I'm, I probably would have been okay face painting, but I can't sit that long. Um, but the, the activity on the gym side, there was so much energy over there. I know Ms. Gooden was reportedly to have shown up over there. Uh, Mr. McBurnett was there. Um, and I, it was super, Garcia's not here, but I'd like to applaud him too. He did a tremendous job with that. He was so busy. It's hard watching him keeping up with them because he's popping up everywhere.
Yeah, and we did that shorthand, and as you know, we don't, we didn't have a recreation coordinator at the time. Uh, Brady Seago took a promotion in his hometown of, uh, Clyde, Texas. It's a suburb of Abilene, if you didn't know. Um, so he left us. But we just recently, uh, yesterday have a new, uh, recreation coordinator. You saw, I didn't have a slide for new staff this quarter because I didn't have any changes this past quarter, which is always good news. Uh, but next quarter report, you'll see at least one because, uh, uh, Mr. Baron Brassfield joined us yesterday, uh, as Brady's replacement. Um, and, uh, I've had a couple of conversations with, uh, Mr. Brassfield already. And, uh, he is gung ho and ready to take this recreation center to the next level, and so we're excited to have him. If his name does sound familiar, it is, yes, it is Craig Brassfield's son. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that can, well, we're gonna recess into executive session now at nine twenty-six. And, uh, if there's any action to be taken as a result of executive session, we'll come back out and announce that action.
We're back up and running, so we'll reopen the regular session at 10:31. No further action to be taken as a result of executive session, and we are hereby adjourned at 10:32.